Next slide please. Just some housekeeping. Just remember to mute your, not your video, but mute your mic. We can, don't mind seeing your picture, but mute your mic so that we can prevent any background noise. The first part will be sections with two speakers in each section. And during the whole event, if you ask, if you have any questions, please write them in the chat column. And then we'll pick them up from there and then ask one of the panelists to answer all the panels depending on the nature of your question. And so the chat area is where you need to do this. Next slide please. The event will be one and a half hours in English and Spanish. And as they said, when you join the meeting, if you need to hear the interpretation at the bottom of your Zoom, you'll see a world sign there with the interpretation button. You can choose either English or Spanish. I see Korean is reflected now, but I don't know that Korean is being translated, but I know it's English and Spanish. If the speaker in Spanish chooses English and vice versa, then next slide. Right, I think let's go into the topic of what we're talking about. You know, my storyline has always been that the social and solidarity economy has a huge, a lot to offer to the world. And yet I don't think we're achieving what we're capable of achieving. The impact of COVID keeps having and will have a very significant negative impact on employment and GDP in many countries. Workplace closures, working hour losses, labor income losses. And the situation does not affect everyone the same way. It affects informal workers more, women, the vulnerable. Those are the people that are being affected more. In fact, our last monitor from the ILO shows that we're going to, or that we're losing up to 480 million, the equivalent of 480 million jobs. That's predicted in the last quarter of this year. A next slide please. It's necessary, and I pick up a quote here, to address the root causes of exclusionary and unsustainable development in order to shape a different future. Rethinking the way we do business will be crucial in order to ensure a people-centered and planet-sensitive recovery. We need to look at all the capitals when we move ahead. People, society, the economy, and the environmental components. They all need to be linked one with the other. The social economy and social and solidarity economy is part of this future. And we need to make sure that we create a space for the social and solidarity economy enterprises to function effectively and make a difference in the lives of people. Next slide please. The SSE naturally comes as one of the alternative economic models, which can be a key actor and an ally of the public sector in co-constructing public policies for development purposes and in the recovery stage. And we see this especially promoting the access to basic rights, in particular to the most vulnerable people. This economy, social economy, has the ability to achieve the SDGs, the sustainable development goals. Promoting access to basic rights, I've mentioned, generating innovative solutions and supporting a just transition, acting as an anti-cyclical antidote. Next slide please. Beyond the recovery and towards the SDGs 2030, it is crucial to give visibility and raise awareness to different ways of doing business and through the economy at all levels, national, regional, and international. And the work of the social, the social solidarity task force of the UN is to position the SSE at the global level. And you'll see we talk about in a moment about the need for a UN resolution on the social and solidarity economy. Next slide please. The UN Task Force is made up of a number of UN members together with observers. And we committed to undertake collaborative activities to enhance the recognition of the role of SSE enterprises and organizations in sustainable development, to promote knowledge. We have this knowledge hub we've created, to support the establishment of an enabling institutional and policy environment, and to ensure coordination of efforts and create and strengthen partnerships. Next slide please. This was a picture of a time we were able to get together face to face in Trento at the end of 2019. And here we set three focused priority objectives and two content priorities. And so we want to be focused in what we do and not try and do everything. And the first thing is we're working towards is supporting governments to bring an UN resolution on the SSE. We were hoping to do it this year. COVID caused a bit of a setback in the process. And so we'll be working with governments to get this on the table next year for consideration. Then we've got an operational program SSE for SDGs, where we're going to look at, we're already in discussion to find sponsors, to set up a program where we can work in countries. And we're going to start with a few pilot countries to set up the enabling environment for SSEs. And then we've got a knowledge hub for SDGs, which is the secretariat is UNRSS, which is part of the UN. And we're now setting a platform of sharing information. And this is also proven to be a success. Then we'll look at two content priorities, education and the local dimension of local economic development. And that is what we're busy discussing at the moment to look at action plans. Next, you'll see the action plan is available. When you've got this slide presentation, you can click there and pick up more detail. Next slide please. It now gives me great pleasure to move on to the panel discussion. And you've heard from Laurent, I'm now going to introduce the other panelists one by one as we go through. You can see their pictures there and hopefully their cameras will be working so you can see them in action. And our first participant is going to be Raymond Lofeld from the Economic Affairs Officer of UNTAD. And he's worked, has worked closely with us on the task force. And he's going to talk about the UN resolution on the social and solidarity economy, the importance and the process. And he will be followed by Yvon Poirier, the Special Advisor on Advocacy and Governance of RIEPEZ. And so first let me give the floor to Raymond. Welcome Raymond, and the floor is yours for your presentation. If you can take the outside presentation off Susan, thank you.
Thank you Vic, and thank you all. Good day because you are in different time zones. So I echo all that Vic just talked, mentioned about the importance of social and solidarity economy for the SDGs. And I also know that Yvon Poirier, who will speak after me, will also talk and focus on the importance of social and solidarity economy for the SDGs. Nevertheless, I'd like to make the point that the SDGs were not on track to be realized by 2030. And that therefore the summit of heads of states last year adopted the decade of action and delivery so that we could accelerate the achievement of the SDGs. And so at the same time, UNTAD has consistently argued that the existing problems signify business opportunities, which can be taken by entrepreneurs, medium, small, and micro enterprises, but especially by social and solidarity economy operating entities for all the reasons that Vic just mentioned, the characteristics of social and solidarity economy enterprises. For instance, I could mention some data from the 2020 report on the implementation of the SDGs. Billions of people without drinking water, without sanitation, electricity, and so on. So these are the opportunities where the social and solidarity economy can have a role in helping to achieve the SDGs. So were we not on track already? COVID-19 exacerbated the situation. And I understand that Yvon may also go more deeper there to the adverse impacts of COVID-19. But one of the impacts it had is that last year, when we met in Trento, we realized that the SDGs were, you know, very much perceived by the population at large as a more international initiative and more for governments and the UN. And that the social and solidarity economy could facilitate the localization of the SDGs through vertical integration of social and solidarity organizations into the larger economy. And that we should also move beyond the, you know, the UN Task Force on Social and Solidarity Economy, which operate more in the secretariat. And to also move to policy guidance through intergovernmental processes and increase support to member states. So that's where the idea that the resolution could help members state so they could share their experience amongst themselves and leading to more increased benefits of social and solidarity economy to their societies and economies. So we saw that the SSE could be an excellent vehicle to support the UN social economic response to COVID-19. So maybe we should talk a bit now more on what we discussed in Trento as well. We discussed the process of a resolution, conceiving the idea, to drafting, to table, negotiation, implementation, and reporting back, which is important because for the next resolution, you would need to update the draft. And in Trento, after Trento, we produced a rationale, which is, you know, what the sponsor countries could use to illustrate the importance of the UN resolution and to garner support from the wider membership. And we got a couple of countries that expressed their interest to lead the process. And I understand Vic and maybe other members of the task force are conversating with them. We were going to have a draft table this session, the last session, for this session, for the 75th session. But because of COVID-19, the UN adjusted its working matters. And for instance, the Second Committee Bureau, the committee where we thought of having this draft being tabled, has the formal decision by member states where, you know, without prejudice to the rights of member states to table a resolution, they strongly encourage delegations to defer from tabling new resolutions. So that's at the point. But I'm confident that the countries that express their willingness to lead the process, that that willingness is still there. And we have the rationale still there, which explain a lot of the things that Vic just highlighted, which is in my view, a kind of a GPS that will, you know, help us bring member states on board. We suggested to have countries from different regions in a kind of a sponsor group because that makes it easier for the other groups to join. In UN, we should realize that it's a trust deficit. And once like developing countries table a resolution, developed countries look at it, you know, different, and vice versa. So if you get a more diverse group, small group that works on it and puts it on the table, it's easier acceptable. We have that experience already. So one of the important things is also that the task force identified some text, which can be in a draft, but it's now in the back pocket for once the country starts working. Importantly is that we need to have like in that resolution, one of the decisions to report on the implementation. Because that's going to be important that the whole system or the UN entities that maybe not even working on social and solidarity economy, the resolution becomes a guidance for them in their work and in their contact with member states and with the UN country teams. And once they report, then we can identify where we need to make more advances. And that can go back into a new resolution going forward. So in short, I'll keep it at that. The importance of social and solidarity economy for achieving the SDGs is recognized. And getting a UN resolution would bring the process forward because now it would be implemented by many UN agencies. And it would go back to the UN country teams and to the member states to support SSE. And there are some opportunities like the UN social economic response. And also the stimulus packages that many countries are now initiating to keep their economies flow. I think this is my time, so I'll be available for questions if there are. But in short, the resolution can be a very important vehicle to move the SSE, but also to move the SDGs forward. Thank you Vic.
Thank you very much Raymond for that kicking off the program. I, you know, we've got over 280 participants on board, 264, 65 now participants. So that is a great audience out there. Thank you everyone for joining. We've got from Mexico, I see from southwest France, from Switzerland, New York. We've got La Paz in Bolivia. And so I can see in the comment chat that we're really crossing the globe. Seoul and Korea, it's great that we can connect right across the spectrum. Without any further ado, I'd like to hand over to Yvon Poirier, a Special Advisor on Advocacy and Governance of RIEPEZ to discuss this point further. Yvon, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much Vic, and thanks to Raymond for making the initial presentation of this project. This is an appeal from the grassroots for UN resolution. So we need UN resolution. All over the world, hundreds of millions of people, possibly as much as 2 billion sort of daily to survive and meet their basic needs. Most are living in the informal economy and like basic and health services, social protection, education, adequate housing, et cetera. Women and girls, you and indigenous peoples, communities, and minorities of different ethnic origins suffer from exclusion and discrimination and often from racism. At the same time, inequality in income and wealth is higher than has been for over a century. Less than 1% of the world's population monopolizes 50% of wealth produced each year. In recent months, one of the results of COVID-19 is that the five richest Americans have seen their wealth increase by 500 billion US dollars. At the same time, in a recent report, the World Bank Group announced that over 100 million people in the world have fallen to abject poverty, less than, or extreme poverty, less than $1.90 per day because of the economic crisis resulted from the pandemic. And they expect more next year. This is scandalous and unacceptable. Communities involved in SSE at grassroots level on all continents saw hope in the adoption by countries of agenda 2030 at UN General Assembly September 2015. However, even before COVID-19 pandemic, countries recognized that progress has started moving at a pace that would allow them to achieve their goals. In some cases, the world has regressed. The ECOSOC president reported after last year's high level reform, national communities not on track to achieve the sustainable goals. Deeper, more ambitious, transformative, and liquid responses urgently needed. SSE is part of that. More recently, on March 26th, the UN Security General made this appeal. The world has agreed on a framework for action. 2030 is an agenda for sustainable development and a person agreement on climate change. And they continue to offer a guiding light for people on the planet. We must ensure that the recovery strategy out of this crisis keeps us on track towards those longer term objectives, building sustainable and inclusive economy. Along with many UN agencies, we in RIEPEZ as an observer, member of the task force, say that the tools, the approach to tackle these needs and cost of action already exist. For many decades, people and communities have been building alternatives to improve their own livelihoods, now such as the economic activity, often women, women in leadership roles. We call it SSE. Economic activities are organized and managed by in a democratic manner by people at the grassroots level. People on planet are more important than profits or surplus. The surplus are reinvested or shared with the community. The UN Task Force published a paper published in 2014 called Social Economy, Sorry, Social and Solidarity Economy and the Challenge of Sustainable Development. There must say there will to do with this. So certain papers and research reaffirm this potential. We need a UN resolution that request states to adopt such an approach, legislation, policies, and programs to fully be integrated into government policies, including national frameworks for realizing agenda 2030. Even some process has been made. The people's government approach has been hampered in most countries by lack of appropriate framework. In some countries, it's even hindered by exclusive support to strictly profit-driven economic activity. Since there are already 2025 states that have adopted legislation and policies, often co-constructed with networks of grassroots organizations, we have the knowledge to expand this approach to all countries of the world. Progress will be slow without a UN resolution. And some countries, backtracking can result from election results. UN resolution adopted by the states of the world is a much stronger base for moving forward. The hundreds of millions of people suffering from exclusion and poverty are not looking for handouts as a long-term solution. They would be happy to implement a more appropriate approach to their livelihoods. What they need are adequate resources, support mechanisms, training, access to sustainable finance, et cetera. The current pandemic shows a resilience of SSE enterprises, as was the case in 2018 and 2019. The reason is simple. Solidarity is at the basis of the economic activity. One last argument, we must speak from our heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much Yvon for your input. I see we've also got people from Bogota, Colombia, from Paraguay, from Spain, from Brazil, from Nicaragua, and some, our list keeps going. You know, when we talk about the social and solidarity economy, it makes me think that even before the COVID crisis, we had a huge social deficit that we were trying to address. COVID has just made it more acute. And therefore, the need for action needs to be speeded up. We had the striving for profits. We had mechanization, digitization. And much of this is positive, but also at the same time, we relegated the importance of the individual to being a number on a balance sheet rather than a human being. So when we talk about a recovery and we hope that we can move into this recovery phase sooner than later, we need to build back greener, as everybody says. We need to have a human-centered approach. And that is why the value proposition that United, that the social and solidarity economy offers is so vital to future planning. We need to get the operational side also on track so that it's not just talking at a global level with policies and fancy statements, but we need to get down to the grassroots to make the difference. I now need to move on to the next phase of our program. Before doing so, I just want to point out to you that in the chat column, Fernando has put on the various. As you can see, the social media, you are welcome to link into any one of those sites to see more about what we're doing. I'd now like to introduce Yogan Shwetman, international consultant and previous colleague of mine at the ILO. But first of all, let's introduce Yogan. The floor is yours to talk about the SSE for SDGs.
Thank you very much Vic, and thank you for inviting me to the session. As Laurent mentioned earlier, the last task force retreat, we decided on three priorities, one of which is the development of an operational program, which we call SSE for SDGs. Which I would like to introduce briefly, using this PowerPoint, if I manage to share my screen. The idea behind the program is the fact that the decision makers, Laurent also mentioned in the introduction, the decision makers at the national and global, at our local level, are not sufficiently aware of the system with development potential of the SSE. They might never have thought about the solidarity economy in the first place. Many countries lack a conducive environment and support structures for the SSE. And the SSE is your gesichts, at the local level are often weak and fragile. And therefore, because of this reasons, the SSE, that not development is full potential in supporting the SDGs. And therefore, this one is a reason, not the only one, that many countries may not achieve the SEDG by SEDG by 2030. So the reverse problem tree into a solution tree. We must ensure that the decision makers are fully aware of the system development potential of the SEDG. We must help members, union, member states to create a conducive environment and support structures for the SEDG. And we must ensure that those SEDG organizations and enterprises are being created as stable, viable, and effective. That will enable them to contribute effectively to the achievement of the SDGs. And that will help UN member states to achieve the SDGs by 2030. What is important here is that we must identify and harness the SEDG specific potential to contribute to the SDGs. We have 17 SDGs and 169 targets. Some targets can be achieved better by government intervention. Some require private companies, some require local communities or even individuals. But some may benefit greatly from the SEDG. So we propose a process that would allow us to identify those SEDG-friendly target. Identify all SEDG targets that could potentially benefit from SEDG support. Among those, identify SEDG targets that could benefit most from SEDG support. For each of those, describe the role and provide examples of SEDG support. Then we determine which ones are the SEDG contribution in relation to the SDGs. And to others, what the SEDG indicates. As is every SEDG target. And finally, decide the final list of SEDG-friendly targets comprising not more than 40. That was in the agreement with the task force. The program was developed in the time when COVID, the Corona outbreak has just begun. But of course, over time, we became important to take into account the outbreak as well. That's why we proposed to prioritize SEDG targets to have a relationship with COVID-19 and can benefit from the SEDG. The program, and the present structure briefly right now, will enter global, operate at the global, national, and local levels. And it would, as the global level benefit, UN member states, UN funds, programs, and agencies, current missions, accredited UN developed cooperation agencies, and the global services fighting, including these efforts. At the national level, governments, parliaments, SEDG networks, social partners, and civil societies, and locally, SEDG support institutions, leaders and promoters, and finally, SEDG members, the individuals that belong to the SEDG, and that are ultimately beneficial, so that we want to reach, so that no one is left behind. We have the theory of change, logical framework, which I agree is not really visible on the screen. The program will operate at the national, international level to produce an appropriate SEDG ecosystem, including support structures at the global and regional level to increase knowledge within the capacity and SEDG global level. And that is broken down in a number of emitted objectives, outcomes, and output, which I will not introduce one by one right now. I think the PowerPoint can be shared with all participants to the second level. I would love to go right the way to the expected project output, the principal ones. Uh, I would love to go right away to the expected project output, the principal ones. The project will operate at the global level and in three, by the countries, uh, the selection criteria will be present right now. So we will have, as you end of the program, three national SSE policy papers, three national SSE laws. And three national networks and support centers. We will have three national SSE service conducted, six the local support institutions capacitated. Uh, and SSE challenge fund of six hundred thousand dollars and is established. And we hope that six hundred SSE organizations, also local level, with twelve thousand individual members will be supported by the program. Uh, it's a global level, we hope to complete six research projects. We hope to organize a second international SSE for SDG conference, the first one took place in March, it's here. Uh, the SSE knowledge, which already exists, and is very operational. In SSE information sections, decision makers in New York, in Geneva, uh, in other places. So that, uh, so who are deciding on development policies are being aware of the SSE. We continue with, with the ILO, ITC International Academy. At least one, uh, which should be every year. And SSE policy, legal guidelines will be drafted in cooperation with the OECD, which is working on a similar program. Uh, I mentioned the table three, by the countries, and we propose a number of criteria for the selection of those countries. The disposal of the national SSE network. The should have the willingness to support to develop SSI policy and laws. The SSI should play a role in the national development plan of the country. See, when the resident coordinator and the members of the UN country teams are favorable of the SSE. Since this is a joint UN program involving more than one agency. Uh, the SSI should play a role and plays in the countries, United Nations system development framework, which is a new name for the company and that's. Although this is a, uh, ongoing SSE projects. And we did, uh, in interest of development, in supporting, it is in initiatives in the respective countries. Because the budget of the program, the program that we are proposing will not be sufficient to work in all areas of, of this region. Finally, the comparative is warranted of the UN task force, what is so-called solidarity economy. It is a self-initiated partnership from the UN family. It is delivering S one, one from bottom up. It is a unique partnership between UN and the global, it is the movement. An effective platform for coordination, exchange of knowledge and joint events. Uh, it has no cost implications for passive participation, agencies, it's very much driven by the enthusiasm and availability of individuals in the United Nations. And is a very concrete contribution to delivering S one. Thank you.
And we certainly are, are, are looking forward to getting this into, to operation and, uh, that's where we're having discussions at the moment with various. Um, donor countries and donor organizations to help us get this going. Um, I'd now like to hand the floor to, uh, Elisa Toranegra, the co-president of SSE International Forum. Thank you for joining us and remember those who need to click the translation, there is the icon at the bottom. So, uh, Elisa, uh, thank you very much, and the floor is yours to take us further on the operational programs.
Muchas gracias, Vic, muchas gracias, Lorenz. Buenos dias, tardes y noches a todos. Gracias a los organizadores por sus esfuerzos en esta virtualidad que nos ha tocado incorporar este año en nuestras rutinas. Desde la copresidencia de Foro Internacional de la Economía Social y Solidaria. La red internacional que reúne y coordina la acción de actores de la economía social y solidaria en los cinco continentes. Realizamos el rol de miembro observador del grupo Task Force desde su formación. Para empezar quiero evidenciar y subrayar el carácter histórico de la, de la agenda 2030 para el desarrollo sostenible. Nunca antes los gobiernos habían atrevido a comprometerse formalmente como lo hicieron en septiembre del dos mil quince. A erradicar todas las formas de pobreza, a erradicar el hambre. Nunca habían prometido alcanzar la igualdad entre mujeres y hombres. Propendiendo por prosperidad, salud y educación para todos y todas, y restaurar el equilibrio económico. Ese compromiso, esa promesa, no se puede quedar sin cumplir. Nosotros no tenemos duda en que la economía social y solidaria es un medio para alcanzar estos objetivos de desarrollo sostenible. De hecho, en todas las reuniones con gobernantes de cualquier nivel institucional. No dejamos de repetir que la economía social y solidaria está identificada en por lo menos sesenta y cinco de las ciento sesenta y nueve metas. Para el cumplimiento de los objetivos de desarrollo sostenible. Pero eso no es suficiente, necesitamos pruebas, datos, conocimientos recopilados. Analizados y difundidos por organismos debidamente reconocidos a nivel global. En este orden de ideas, el programa de economía social y solidaria para el desarrollo sostenible de las Naciones Unidas, Task Force. Que acaba de explicar muy bien Jürgen en tu presentación. Nos va a permitir a nosotros, organizaciones de la sociedad civil, que promovemos la economía social y solidaria. E incidimos en las agendas de los tomadores de decisión. Usar esos resultados del programa para poder dinamizar la economía social y solidaria. También nos permitirá basarnos en la experiencia de esos tres países pilotos que mencionaba Vic. Que se beneficiarán del apoyo del programa para visibilizar. Los impactos de la economía social y solidaria y concientizar a los demás países. De la necesidad de cambiar la lógica económica. Otra urgencia que consideramos que está priorizada en el programa. Es la movilización de la economía social y solidaria a nivel global. Hoy en día ya no se trata simplemente de dirigir bien una empresa. Y hacer bien el trabajo, es fundamental no hacer daño. No abusar de los recursos ambientales, de nuestros recursos ambientales porque son de todos. De los recursos económicos, de los recursos humanos. Y lo más importante, en medio de tantas diferencias y brechas que hay en el mundo. Tenemos que comprometernos, ampliar el alcance de la solidaridad. Especialmente a las grandes organizaciones como las trescientas cooperativas más grandes. Que gestionan más de dos mil millones de activos o de las muchísimas mutuales que dan tantos servicios a sus comunidades. Debemos hacer que los principales actores de la economía social y solidaria sean conscientes. De la responsabilidad histórica que les incumple. Finalmente, y como miembro observador desde sus inicios. Puedo decir que la economía social y solidaria es esencial. Para alcanzar los diecisiete objetivos de desarrollo sostenible. Probablemente sea incluso una condición sine qua non para este éxito. Pero esto no sucederá sin que además los propios agentes de la economía social y solidaria. Dediquemos el tiempo suficiente, la energía y estructuremos un esfuerzo a nivel global. La articulación entre todos es clave. Por lo tanto, es necesario que todo el movimiento de la economía social y solidaria se movilice en torno. A este programa para el 2030 y que lo hagamos práctico y visible. Que ayudemos a resolver brechas, que seamos y nos visibilicemos como parte de la solución en cada región del mundo. América, Asia, África, todos los continentes. Porque vivimos los problemas y sabemos cómo resolverlos. En resumen, que entre todos seamos capaces de gestar y vivir un mundo mejor. Como miembro observador, debo además agradecer a las Naciones Unidas. A las múltiples agencias que están involucradas en este programa. A que realmente sigan involucrando a la economía social y solidaria porque es el actor. Que no solamente lleva problemas, sino también podemos aportar en soluciones. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Elisa, and thank you very much to the support from SSE International. We have had many activities, joint activities, and, and we look forward to a, a continued relationship in, in building on the. On the platforms that have been created. Um, I see we've also got people from Argentina that have joined us. Um, the one disadvantage of, of the COVID is, is that we're not able to travel. I think we realize we can have a lot more meetings by using the digital facilities that we're using today. But my last trip from Geneva was to Argentina and to Uruguay, uh, to Peru. And it was, uh, when you experience the culture and the, the, the amazing societies and people. In that part of the world, you can't experience that on a screen. And so I look forward to again when I can continue with my travels. Um, I've traveled to many parts of Central and, and Latin America. Um, and this, and to parts of Asia, uh, well, all over the world, but I miss that and I certainly look forward to it. Because that's what life's experience is about, where we can interact face to face, um, rather than on a screen. But for now, we will talk to each other on a screen. Um, let's move on now, we, we're going to talk now about the knowledge hub. And we, we spoke about in my introductory remarks about the importance of knowledge sharing. And, uh, we're going to ask Ilchong Yi, who's the senior research coordinator at UNRIS. Uh, Ilchong is the research coordinator at UNRIS, and he'll be followed by Bob. Uh, thank you, Ilchong, you've had a bit of a wild introduction there, uh, to mine. Uh, maybe that will give you, and we said Ilchong was very creative the other day. I thought maybe that was his creative way of introducing himself. Um, but, uh, Ilchong, the floor is yours before we get interrupted again.
Good morning, good afternoon and good evening to all of you, depending on where you are. I'm Ilchong Yi, as introduced, senior research coordinator at UNRIS. Which is the implementing agency of the UN Task Force Knowledge Hub for the SDGs. I'm going to talk about the research and communication activities of the knowledge hub. Together with co-presenter Barbara Sack, managing director of Syria International. Who is a member of the Knowledge Hub Advisory Group. Uh, before I start my presentation, I'd like to briefly mention R and R. That means research and resilience in the context of crises such as financial crisis and COVID nineteen. We all know what R and D is. It is a process intended to create new or improved technology. That can provide a competitive advantage at the business, industry or national level. But whenever enterprise, industry or country is under the financial constraints or in crisis. The first thing they want to cut in terms of budget is R and D. Well, to those who want to cut the R and D budget, maintenance is more important than invention of new products or ideas. But maintenance in the context of crisis also demands a lot of research. Research should not have a stop-go cycle because of the fluctuating external conditions. That is what I meant by R and R, research and resilience. When you want to make resilient organizations and forces in society which can build back better. We need innovative ideas and this knowledge drawn from a good research. Therefore, we have to put research in front of resilience as well as development. And we may have to talk about R and R as well as R and D. And the Knowledge Hub Barbara and I will talk about today is one of the collective efforts. To continue the research for both resilience and development. Uh, can I have my slide? Knowledge Hub, uh, for the SDGs was established in two thousand and eighteen as a part of UN Task Force. It focuses on three activities, assess size and analyze issues related to the SDGs and SSE. So in a way, the Knowledge Hub envisages its role as a research arm of the UN Task Force. The second is related to this research activity and it is the production of knowledge on SSE for the SDGs. These roles of the Knowledge Hub in processing and producing knowledge. Have been particularly manifested in the last year's UN Task Force International Conference. The third is the communication and outreach. Targeting policymakers, practitioners and researchers. The Knowledge Hub webpage is a key means of implementation of this communication and outreach activity. Uh, next slide please. With these activities as a key focus, the Knowledge Hub has produced many interesting outputs. First of all, as I mentioned, there is an online knowledge hub website, which is a part of UN Task Force website. It has more than one hundred papers on the issues related to SSE and SDGs. And in nine, uh, two thousand and nineteen, we have organized two, uh, UN Task Force International Conferences. One Asian version in South Korea and one international version in Geneva. Which generated lots of exciting discussions on the role of SSE in achieving the SDGs in local context. And currently, the Knowledge Hub is undertaking two research projects. The first is opportunities and challenges of statistics funded by Korean statistics. And the second is SSE encyclopedia for which we are still seeking for funding. Next slide please. Early this year, we established Knowledge Hub Advisory Group to mobilize collective efforts to further develop. Our research strategy, research projects and communication activities. The members of the advisory group are UNDP Art, OECD, GSEP and Syriac International. Our co-op and Barbara Sack, who is the delegation of Syriac International. To the Knowledge Hub Advisory Group for the rest of the presentation. Barbara, over to you.
Thanks very much for this opportunity, as Ilchong said. So we are research center and we are very happy to be part of the, uh. Entire endeavor here and also the Knowledge Hub, the UN Task Force as observers. And I would like to stress and underline two or three things. First of all, it's really important for all the people around the world and especially those listening to us now. To have a global platform and a reference website at world level. It's important also to have legitimacy and peer recognition. And I think that this is really ensured by the large number of members that can be associated to all those efforts. On the Knowledge Hub, but also looking at all the observers that are now in the UN Task Force. Because they represent different and various components and approaches, understanding of the SSE. And especially of the various roles that SSE entities and organizations can have to achieve the SDGs. So it's really important to have a platform and a one place. Where we could find basic information, but also links for further information and study. So I really would like to thank all the people around and many of the participants and speakers. That do co-manage this and co-work together to have this platform and the Knowledge Hub. Second, it's really important to have communication and network among various actors and stakeholders. So policymakers, practitioners, scholars. And as Jürgen and Vic said, it's really important to learn from each other. And unfortunately, we cannot meet together for the moment. But the getting together in Toronto, in Asia, in Latin America, in Europe, wherever, in Africa. It's really important to learn from each other and also from different cultural aspects. And from the local experience, it's really important to go on and be able to travel. Because when you travel, you really can see what's going on on the site and on the local level. So this enthusiasm and the big family that can be social and solidarity economy. We currently miss and we truly hope that we soon will be able to meet each other again physically. Next slide please. So I would also, uh, make and stress the importance for the strategies. Uh, Ilchong, Oliver and Vic and Jürgen also already spoke about the different action plan. And what we favor, and it's really important to have. And it's really important to have players within the UN system. I speak here of the resolution that was presented, well, about an hour ago now. But also to establish the necessary linkages between the grassroots initiatives and the local level all the way up to the world level. So it's very important for all the people around us that they bring with them the local experiences. And we are very grateful to the UN to be able to put all those efforts together and then be able to speak at really world level. So second, I would like to say that mobilizing resources is also important without forgetting the younger generation. We have an action plan where education will be really important and it's important to have the younger people on board. We have to explain them what is social and solidarity economy and to show them with practices how they could cooperate too. So research, communication, resilience and all together, we can make it. Thanks.
Thank you for all our presenters who've had their input thus far. We have some time now. We've got 29 minutes for some questions. If you've got questions, please put them into the chat column. We have one or two that I'm going to direct to the panel. Sometimes I'll only ask one or two of the panelists, but this opening question I'm going to ask each of the panelists. If you can just give a one sort of one minute brief or even 30 seconds, but short interventions so we can try and cover as much ground as possible. The question I want to ask each of the panelists and I'll call you in and one by one. And I'm going to ask you Lisa to come in first and then I'll go to Jürgen, then to Raymond, Yvonne, Barbara and Ilchung in that order so you can get your thoughts ready. The first question is, let me just get in front of me, is how do we transform the present and build a better future from the perspective of the social and solidarity economy? I mean, everybody, everyone has the slogan, they walk around now and say, we need to build back better and greener. How do we do, how do we start this when we've got this COVID that's just causing havoc out there? It's a difficult question, but let's hear your thoughts. Lisa, can you come in first, please? Let's see, are they able to unmute Lisa, please? To Jürgen, Jürgen, can you respond to that?
Let me try again. I hope you can hear. Well, I think that the COVID-19 outbreak has at least one positive impact to reaffirm the centrality of the human being in development. What is meant by leaving no one behind? When you look at the SDG number eight, it's usually looked at being on this work, but it's also covers economic growth. The first target is seven percent economic growth. As I think the COVID-19 outbreak has shown that economic growth is not the ultimate ratio of everything. Then we need to ensure that the human being benefits from growth. And there, I think the SSE can play a very important, very precious role in linking the economy to the human being.
Thank you. Lisa, are you there to come in? Ah, yes, we see you. Please come.
Yeah. Gracias, Vic. Yo creo que uno de los grandes beneficios de COVID, con mucho dolor por los enfermos y las pérdidas, es que se ha podido visibilizar la diferencia que hay entre clases sociales, entre clases económicas. Y nosotros podemos precisamente estar cerca de la gente, cerca de la solución, precisamente motivándolos a que se organicen comunitariamente. Este es el momento en que todos los estados están poniendo mucho dinero en áreas de la solidaridad, pero no es lo mismo un dinero, una acción externa que la realizada por las mismas comunidades. Entonces, si tú me preguntas, Vic, ¿cómo hacemos? Yo creo que hay que empezar en terreno a motivar la sociatividad, a motivar que entre todos los del barrio, los de la zona, podamos reconstruir precisamente los medios en que podamos vivir mejor, tanto en compartir alimentos, tanto en disminuir costos de transacción y poder unirnos sobre todo con el tema nutricional, la productividad agrícola en las zonas. Es muy importante poder decirle a la gente, aquí estamos unidos y como no podemos estar viajando, aquí vamos a resolver nuestro alimento, aquí vamos a resolver nuestra educación, aquí vamos a resolver cuidándonos todos. Yo creo que la sociatividad puede ser una respuesta muy importante en este momento. Y nosotros, las redes internacionales, las redes nacionales, las redes locales, estar muy atentos a qué necesitan las comunidades para poder darles elementos de cómo pueden funcionar en una economía que no conocía.
Thank you very much. Raymond, are you there to come in?
Yes, I'll take this from the UN resolution point of view because one of the things UN resolutions say is to the UN system entities to consider the resolution in the implementation of their activities by providing policy guidance to member states. And you may know that with the reform of the United Nations Development System, the UN system now has to work through a wall of society approach, bringing in all the actors that can contribute to achieving the SDGs. So if that is a resolution that gives this impetus that you need to bring already all the actors, so you can bring also the SSE's actors into the activities that the UN system is going to have in country, giving policy guidance to the member states to continue. So I'll keep it at that.
Thank you very much, Yvonne. Your thoughts? Yvonne, you're muted. You need to unmute yourself. Yvonne? Yvonne, we can't hear you. Can you please unmute?
Okay, now.
Right, you're right.
As Martin explained, it takes time to adjust this. Yes, first of all, I'd say that the crisis has shown that the policies of the last 20, 30 years of running back on public services, structural adjustment programs that IMF had and so forth, made it so that services, health services and everything else has been shows that has been really hurt. On the other hand, this crisis has shown solidarity. In small villages, small cities and so forth, people have worked together to survive and to help each other. Local food systems, health and so forth, caring for your neighbors and so forth. So it has shown that the people are willing and can do this. So and as the 2008, 2009 crisis, it's been resilient, our SSE organizations. And part of this is already monitored. I look up SSE website and all of our organizations have already when we're asked, we've showcased that people are doing to resist and build differently. So I think I'm quite optimistic. Thank you.
Barbara, your thoughts? We're not hearing you, so you must be muted.
Yeah. Do you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thanks. I would like to speak on what Yvonne just said. And I have two thoughts. I think that indeed it is the existing network, together with the public local authorities, but also all the network, the solidarity network that exists, that showed the best capacity to move on and to go on. So those networks, they were not looking for profit. They were just there to help each other and help the people. And I think that it's really important to have this co-construction and together with people of goodwill that move on. But you need to have the networks existing. So I also think of the trade unions, especially in the public sector. They really moved on and the mutuals companies, they offered their service, their network. They were connected to all the people by paying back, for instance, health insurance packages and things like this. So trade unions, mutual association, they have the connection and they also had the electronic connection to the people, to help them. And so networks, public infrastructure, essential services are also needed and necessary to move on. So we don't have to forget those essential services and infrastructure. And then, of course, the human beings, the women and the men that are ready to help and to act. So this is really what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ilchung, your thoughts?
Yes, I think we have an answer in your question already. Everybody is talking about transformation, but why we cannot transform the world? I think first of all, we have to take the word transformation seriously. Everybody is talking about different nature and different meanings of transformation. We have to take the word transformation seriously first. And secondly, we have to think about and act for transformative change where we are as against incremental change. I think transformative change is different from incremental change. We cannot be complacent with incremental change. And third one is we have to encourage young ones to be audacious and bold enough to challenge us. We are generations which created problems and young generations have to sort out those problems. We have to encourage young ones to be audacious and bold enough to challenge us. And I think that is related to educational initiative or education initiative we are thinking about within UN Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to add, add from the chair. You know, I mentioned in my introductory comments about using the different capitals very effectively. I serve on a board called the Capitals Coalition, which is a newly created board looking at the indicators of success for enterprises. And the way forward is, as I said, we need to make sure we've got the environmental, the people, the individuals and the societies and also the economic factors. And we've heard bits and pieces from everyone. But when we talk to a conference like this, it's like being in a church because most of the people who are on this call are there because in some other way they have an interest or are participating in an organization or in the social and solidarity economy. And we then pat each other on the back and we say, job well done. But what we need is a stronger leadership from all parts of the world, from all organizations that are represented on this webinar today. And that leadership needs to go into communities. But most of all, in the developing world, we need to influence governments to create a regulatory space that will enable us to further the interests of the social and solidarity economy, at the same time making a bigger impact on the lives of people. Now Judith posed an interesting question because COVID has hit the world without any respect of countries. The developed economies are suffering as well as those developing and fragile states out there. And the question is, do we just as the UN work going ahead with the developed, developing economies? And do we ignore the developed economies? Well, I think that the capacity of the UN and the focus of the UN is definitely in the developing economies. We don't ignore the fact that there are important, that there is important work to be done in the developed economies. But we find that the economic situation, the infrastructure and the way that the social economy is already entrenched into their systems, it makes it far easier for them to respond. But I think it's an interesting question because we mustn't be seen to just ignore those areas that are in need of help. And so when we talk of a UN resolution or we talk of a Knowledge Hub, it certainly needs to include the participants in the developed economies as well. And we mustn't create a split between the two. But most certainly, the work that we are doing most of the time is in the developing world. So I think let's hear some thoughts on the role of the UN. How can the UN play a bigger role? And I'm going to turn to Jürgen. You've been in the UN, you're now out there as a consultant. You know, what kind of advice would you give as a consultant? If the UN system said to you, what should we be doing better to assist the countries out there? Other than the operational example, is there any other thought you've got, Jürgen?
Well, I think one issue that remains to be solved in the UN is working together in a better way. I was fortunate to work in Tanzania in 2006, 2008 when Tanzania became delivering as one pilot country, meaning that the UN agencies were trying to develop joint programs and deliver those programs jointly. It was in my view a very beneficial experience. And that which needs to be repeated both at the country level and at the global level. It makes no sense for UN agencies to compete with each other. They have a lot of synergies and complementarities to exploit and that should be the way ahead. That would be my advice.
Thank you. We've heard a lot about educating people. Ilchung, give us an example of what you see as a way that we could get the youth on board through what means? If you think creatively, what comes to mind when you talk about educating or involving the newer generations that are coming through?
I think if you look at the history of development, of awareness about the human rights or climate change crisis and all that, I think, you know, school education played a significant role in educating the youth about those dangers and the human rights importance. And they became kind of leaders and frontiers and advocates for those movements about human rights and climate change. So I think it is quite important to engage with school education with our knowledge and experience on SSE. Every country has different school system and different system to make curricular. But I think everybody in this forum and beyond should look at the way to integrate our knowledge on SSE and information on SSE into school education system. I think that that should be the first step to educate young ones and nurture them as leaders of SSE to transform the society and the world. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I look at this Greta Grunberg, the young lady who's championing the goals of the environment from the youth and the amount of publicity and space that she created with her action. Maybe we need some youth like that in the social and solidarity economy that will stand up and make a noise. We should even look at some champions out there. I'm a big football fan and I was thinking, coming from Latin America, maybe we should get Lionel Messi to take up the platform for us and we'll certainly pull in all the football followers across the world to listen to us. But we need to be creative. I think that's the, one of the notions. We need to be creative in how we talk about the social and solidarity economy in a way that makes it exciting for people to be engaged with it. When I look at the associations on the United Nations Task Force, I look at Syriac and SSE International. And I come to you, Barbara, what do you, what do you see from Syriac? Is what would be driving your organization? And I'll come to you, Lisa, next. What is the key part for SSE? What's going to drive you in the next year ahead in the activities of your institution? Barbara, first you.
Yes, thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. I would say that the particularity and originality of Syriac's network is really that it mixes together researchers and practitioners. And we have people from all kinds of organizations and we share innovations and recent good solutions. And it's really from this peer learning partnerships that we can move on in advance. And I think that in the years to come, this will really be our action plan. We have our General Assembly next Tuesday and we put this high on the agenda is to learn from each other, but also to check what has worked in which environment. So there is a difference if you are in a big city or in a rural area, but there are solutions that can be taken from each other. And we are really going also to look at the post-COVID, what has worked? What can we learn from either organization, from the social and solidarity economy, but also from other people and other stakeholders and actors? And it's really this peer learning that is really And it's really this peer learning that is really the most important for us, but not to forget the practitioners and not to forget also the managers of big companies that can have a big influence. If a manager moves on and say, "I want to be creative and innovative", and if he has good leadership capacities, you can really make big steps forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Barbara, Elisa, your SSE International, some thoughts about what's going to keep you busy or keep you awake at night for the next few months?
Nuestro enfoque principal es la visibilización. O sea, yo creo que si nosotros logramos en los grupos de interés de los diferentes ámbitos de decisión, lograr informar sobre la economía social y solidaria, quiénes somos, qué hacemos, documentar y visibilización, ellos nos van a tener en cuenta muy, de una manera muy importante, en la solución. Ellos nos van a involucrar. Si eso es así, nuestros miembros se estimulan, se sienten útiles, se sienten que son herramientas de cambio en los países. Porque es muy feo cuando uno está en un país y ve que a la economía social y solidaria no la tienen en cuenta. Entonces, importante visibilizar nuestra gestión en todo, en todo. Y yo propondría que se tome cada uno de los objetivos de desarrollo sostenible en los que estamos y poder documentar qué hacemos para eso. Qué hacemos para la equidad de género, qué hacemos para la disminución de la pobreza, qué hacemos en cada uno, qué hacemos para controlar el hambre o para aportar una mejor seguridad alimentaria. Entonces, yo creo que es muy importante la visibilización en nuestra entidad. En ESI estamos recopilando datos para mirar cómo aporta cada uno de las instancias de la economía social en los países a lo que es el logro de cada, de cada meta. Porque si no logramos visibilizar eso, tampoco nuestra misma gente se reconoce, se valora y puede distorsionarse. Necesitamos auto mostrarnos. Luego pasar a los grupos de interés y ahí sí de generar una dinámica, ¿verdad? De visibilización y valoración que puede ser importante para que el resultado sea positivo.
Thank you very much. Yvonne, and then I'm going to go to Raymond, and then we'll wrap up. Yvonne, what's going to keep you busy in the next few months?
Our work will be focused a lot on network building in different countries. Because getting national policies is essential, that there are SSE networks in different countries. They often are weak. Nobody wants to fund networks. Even different agencies, when we go to them, they say, "How many jobs are you going to create? What project, what will be the outcome?" But nobody, the capacity building is essential. So we, at the global level, to work with the task force, we continue this work on different projects, but working. And we have two programs coming up this year, working in Latin America and in Western Africa. We really want to strengthen the networks, because otherwise, building with the government's public policies will not come up. So this is really something we are working, our priority for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond, I'd like to ask you from a UN perspective, what do you think the UN could do better? We've heard from Jürgen suggesting about how we could be more integrated. Any quick thoughts on the UN side of things? What should we be doing better in the next few months?
Thank you. I echo what Jürgen said and also link to what I said also earlier. That's why the reform of the UN Development System focused on having a whole of system support to country to mirror a whole of society, helping countries to come with policy guidance that they can bring the whole of society into their development activities. And then we can mirror that with a whole of system support to them. And then the actors of SSE in the solution that we're talking about can get, you know, in road to the system. So this is what I would, I would say maybe one more thing for why we need the resolution as well is that once you get reporting on the implementation of the resolution, you will record, you will bring the experiences that in country A and country B for country C to see what's happening somewhere else, and they can learn from each other. I'll keep it at that. Thank you, Vic.
Thank you very much. There's a comment that has been made in the chat column by Maria Fustik. Now, I don't know Maria, and there's so many people on the screen, I'm not able to identify her yet. But the statement, she says, "As a young student myself, we learn so much about issues and problems, but not about solutions. Educating about SSE can fill that gap." I think we've just found our Greta Grunberg out there in terms of a young person who's putting a challenge out to us. So I'm going to send Maria my email address from the ILO and ask that she contacts me, because that is a statement which I think we would like to take up and see how we can involve Maria in our future discussions and to involve more youth like Maria. And it's really a pleasure to have her on the chat show today. And if there's any other students out there, feel free to contact us, that we can start looking at how we can involve you in our discussions at the UN level and at the different organization level. It would be great to have people like you on board. Now, we've come to the end of our session, and I'd like to thank, first of all, Lahan, and I'll see if there's anything you want to say in closing, Lahan. But I'd like to thank Martin for handling that guy who bombed in or those people that bombed into our system very efficiently and effectively. It did give us a bit of entertainment. But, so thank you, Martin, for how you've handled our session for one and a half hours. To Susan and to Valentina for your great work behind the scenes. And then to our panelists for giving their insights and presentations. That is much appreciated. Then to each of you out there that made this webinar, an interesting debate. There's two hundred and sixty-nine people out there who've joined. It shows a lot of interest. And if any one of you feel free, not just the young people that I've invited, but if any of you want to take up points of discussion at the UN or with us or make comments, we would welcome that. We want to be as inclusive as possible. We don't want to be just a few people that continually take on these platforms. We want to involve your associations, wherever you are out there. It would be great to hear from you. And if you send in Spanish, it's quite easy to translate, or any other language, we'd welcome that. So Lahan, I'm going to ask you to have the final say, and thank you for setting this up. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to moderate this session. Lahan, the floor is yours to close us.
Okay, thank you very much, Vic, and also all other speakers. I think today's section shows that how it is important to build this continuous dialogue and communication with the people, including actually the UN Task Force for Social Solid Economy. I think as just Vic has said, for me also, this student's proposal was very, you know, inspiring, that actually that we really have to be constantly in communication with people who are, really who have to tell us what is the direction and actually what should be the final objective of our work and in terms of both visibility and also in terms of the work plan. So I think that it will be interesting also for the coming years that we could have this kind of open dialogue with as many as people who are engaged in social solidarity economy and who are interested also, especially from young people, actually, to make it known about the work of UN Task Force for Social Solid Economy, but also to get some possible solutions from them. And I think today's section was, for me, one kind of this continuous dialogue. So thank you once again, actually, to join our global virtual forum to share about what you are trying to do as a UN Task Force for Social Solid Economy. And actually, that we would need to build a much larger alliance with the people in the underfield and also with the young people. So I am looking forward to this. Maybe I was thinking that even for UN resolution project, we should actually organize a global campaign to pressureize our government. So thanks once again, I think, for joining us and moderating this section. I was really, very happy that more than two hundred and sixty-eight people or two hundred and thirty people are really following this discussion. And I think this would be really much more the visibility and the recognition of what you are trying to do as a UN Task Force for Social Solid Economy. So let's continue our collaboration, and thanks a lot.
Thank you, everyone, and goodbye.